Next, we're going on to the good news and I'm going to pass it on to our superintendent.
Thank you. I would like to invite Mrs. Siemens and Mrs. Chandler to come down and then they will invite their teachers who will invite our wonderful elementary students to showcase their artwork this evening. So, Mrs. Chandler and Mrs. Siemens.
Good evening, school committee. Good evening, parents and families and staff out there. We are happy to present tonight an art showcase for you of all of the wonderful work that the elementary students are doing in art. This year, I'm very pleased to have a new staff member in our art team, Mr. Thomas Tricker. He's not new to the district, but he's new to the elementary staff. He replaced the irreplaceable Ellen Osborne, but he's brought a lot of new techniques, a lot of technology, and some fresh ideas to our school. And we'll invite the students up and Mr. Tricker momentarily, once Ms. Siemens speaks.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's great to see so many faces out there. So, we have elementary students as well from Minot Forest in grades three and four. So, Mrs. Nancy Lennon is our art teacher. So, she'll be introducing the students and they'll be showcasing their artwork as well.
Mr. Tricker, I'd like to invite you up to the podium, please. I don't know if you can see this wonderful technology behind us of Deacon's School, but this is some of Mr. Tricker's technological background that he brings to his artwork.
All right. So, we're going to see a short video first before we call the students down. This video was done after school. I've got some of my students in the care program and we created some animations, so some stop-motion animation. I'm not new to the district. I was at the high school for 15 years and when I was at the high school, I taught computer animation, graphic design, and just art ones. I'm trying to bring some of the technology in with the elementary students as well. So, if we hit play. And the students did this with stop motion and they made the music in GarageBand. Christian, do I need to do something for the sound?
It should come through the projector is the best I can do. You can put the microphone down to the speaker on the laptop. Keep the audio in game.
So, the first part was by Colin Cherelucci and he's here tonight. And the second part, I'll talk about when it's done. That's okay. And the second part was done by Haruni Vasino. So, I'm starting kind of small with my, you can, with my care program students, but I'd like to bring some of this technology to my regular classroom students as well. So...
Okay. Without further ado, we're going to invite our Deacon's students up to showcase their artwork. So, here we are. We have Adriana Raymond, Lily Woodside. I have Hadley Coppins, Colin Cherelucci. I believe I saw Kayden come on in. Kayden Gonzales come on up. Samantha Savoy. Do I have any other Deacon's students here? Okay.
You have one. No, Mrs. Chandler. There you have Gianna.
All right. Can we stand to come this way?
Gianna? Hello, Gianna. Welcome.
All right. So, let's start by showing our artwork to the audience and we can turn and show our artwork to the school.
Gianna Kosh.
So, these students were chosen. These are first and second grade students. Can everybody see? Can we spread out enough? Let's make sure everybody's got some space. These are first and second grade students. And these students were chosen because they are super hard workers, super classroom helpers. They exemplify our Deacon's pledge of being responsible and respectful and always being safe. They help other students out. If another student has a question, so I'm so proud that they were able to come here tonight. And thank you so much for this opportunity for them to show their work to you. The students can turn. The students can turn back. So, we use watercolors and krayfa and we use some temper paint with Q-tips to paint some kind of positive, negative space things. With the second graders did ships or boats and the first graders did apples. All right. Just turn back around so the audience can see your wonderful artwork.
And boys and girls, could I have one volunteer who would like to talk about their artwork? Not one?
So, Colin, Colin did the animation too.
Oh, this is Colin's animation. Excellent job, Colin. All right. Does anybody have any questions, school committee? Questions for the boys or girls, or Mr. Tricker or I? All right. Yes, Mr. Sweat, how?
I would like to ask anybody, what's the difference between art and music?
Hadley?
In art, you're using the pencil and paintbrush and music can use it instantly.
Nice explanation. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much, boys and girls. Thank you, families, for bringing our wonderful Deacon's students here tonight. We are so proud of them.
Thank you so much, Deacon's students.
Thank you, Mr. Tricker, for putting this together.
And thank you to administration and all the other teachers and support staff at Deacon's and the families because this, I couldn't do this without you. And we couldn't do this without the wonderful skills that Mrs. Osborne instilled in these students before they became my students. So, thank you, Mrs. Osborne. Thank you, parents. Thank you, Mrs. Chandler.
All right. So, we'll do things a little bit differently. So, can we have our Minot Forest students come on up? So, what I'd like you to do is come to the table because we would like you to tell everyone what your name is and then we'll have you go right on to the stairs so you can show your artwork. All right? And so, tell us your name and what grade you're in.
Hi, my name is Mary and I'm in third grade.
My name is Andrew and I'm in third grade.
My name is Brooke and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is May and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name-
Hi, my name is Daniela and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Abigail and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Emily and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Samantha and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Brooklyn and I'm in fourth grade.
Somebody has to hit the light over there.
So, we had a few other third graders that weren't unable to make it tonight with us. But, so the third grade project, Mary, can you turn your project around and show the audience, fourth graders? Turn yours around, please. The third grade project, we were talking about the elements of art and focusing on color, line, and shape, and where patterns add texture. And we took a cat that the students are familiar with from books called Pete the Cat, and we turned him into Crazy Pete the Cat with all their patterns and line and color. So, that's a third grade project. The fourth graders, we were talking about fall landscapes and we have a lot going on that we talk about and all the vocabulary words are always put on the whiteboard in front of them. We talked about overlapping. We talk about perspective, blending of colors, and both of these projects, we used oil pastels. The students can also fill you in on some of the things that they learned. We talked about blending and foreground, middle, and background of the picture and how we create an illusion in art to get the viewer to see and think that they are seeing things in 3D when they're really not because we're really working on a two-dimensional surface. So, those are the two projects. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anybody want to explain anything about your picture or how you did it? Was it easy? Was it difficult? A little shy tonight?
It's okay.
Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes. How long have you been working on your pictures?
How many classes did it take?
Like, three or two classes.
Two or three classes for the fourth grade projects? How about the third grade projects?
Two.
At least two classes?
You are extremely talented to do that in two classes. You would pay to read.
And I will say that I also on Facebook belong to an art teacher group. And the art teachers that belong to our group are across the country and across the world, actually. And I posted some of the pictures of the students' artwork and we have over 500 art teachers that have responded so positively to the artwork and are asking for the lesson plan and the content on which we made these beautiful pieces. So, that's even a more tremendous statement to their wonderful talent. So, we're very pleased about that.
Mr. Sweat?
So, anybody, what is the most help, what is the best advice your teachers gave you when you were trying to do this? Yes, sir?
Color. Coloring might be a doctoring, it should be.
Interesting. Anybody else?
I think you over that things can look more in 3D than if you just did it in 2D and it's just, no overlapping.
Yes. See, I couldn't stick to it, so I can't.
We need to see it on this side.
Now, you have to turn around.
That's amazing. You have to save that for your Halloween decorations every year. Put it out.
Good job, guys.
Love it. I love the way everyone did the moon also, the shading around it. Did someone teach you how to do that? And I noticed the grass looks, that grass looks so real. It's very realistic. And this, are these like transformer types of creatures?
Pete the Cat.
Tell me about, tell me about these two because they're different. Tell me something. It's a cat, right?
Yeah, okay. Pete the Cat.
And it's another cat. I love the, I love the way, it's just a very different kind of cat. I've never seen that kind before. So, it's very artistic. Thank you. You're very talented. Definitely talented here. Maybe you'll come back every year and show us something you made.
All right. So, your family is one more time.
You can turn around now.
I can't help but think that as adults, we go to paint nights to do these kind of things. And here they are with these beautiful pictures. All right. Thank you, boys and girls for coming. Thank you, families, for bringing them.
Mine still don't come out that good.
Next, the Student Advisory Committee, oh, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipient, Scott Palladino, please.
So, today, we're going to recognize 37 students that will be receiving the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. These students had to score advanced in at least one of their MCAS tests from 10th grade. They had to be proficient or higher. And the other two, most of these students are advanced in all three. Before I read off the names, I did have quite a few students come down to see me today regarding them not being able to be here tonight. We have some practices going on. We have some work situations and we have, the last class is meeting in the next two days before the term ends. So, we have quite a few students finishing up some work and studying for tests and quizzes. These students are some of our strongest students academically speaking, and they're very involved. So, I'm going to read them all off. And when I read your name, if you are here, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind coming on stage so we can get a picture and recognize all of you for your academic achievements. Dante Andrade, Brittany Arnold, Alexia Barber, Jared Betancourt, Jalen Castro, Daniela Cobb, Cameron Kudo, Anna Paul de Oliveira, Courtney DePina Junior, Hannah Edelston, Jason Ellis, Kylie Enos, Cian Fernandez, Parker Gagnon, Sarah Gallagher, Nathan Duran, Bradley Horncovitz, Alessandra Hatch, Scott Hatfield, Madison Huff, Carolyn King, Gabrielle LaFrancois, Tyler Litchfield, Brandon McPherson, Alexander Molding, Emily Nash, Cameron Olson, Ivy Pacico, Alicia Papadakis, Minnie Patel, Lilian Pierro, Elizabeth Ruiz, Victoria Russo, Riley Thomas, Jackson Wallace, Jessie Wallace, and Alana Young, 2018 Abigail Adams Scholars, folks. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I know it's the end of the term and I appreciate your commitment to being here and congratulate you on this award. This award, for those that are not familiar with it, is free tuition to any state school throughout Massachusetts for all four years. It could equate to as much as $8,000 in total, depending on which school the students choose to attend. And again, I know how busy you all are and it's the end of the term and I do appreciate you all being here. So, thank you. And one more round of applause for these fine young men and women. All right. Now, go home and study. Thank you.
Next, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 25th, 2017. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0. Now, another high school, the Student Advisory Committee, would please come down. Your turn.
So, since this is our first meeting, I'll do some formal introductions. You may recognize the young lady to my far left, Elizabeth Ruiz. She was with us for the Student Advisory Council last year and this will be her, this year will be her last year as she graduates in 2018. To my immediate left is Jasmine Black. Jasmine is a sophomore at Wareham High School. And we also have unfortunately an ill student, Madison Burnett, who had to go home ill from school. But she will be with us in some future meetings as well. So, we're excited about the three of them. We have a sophomore, a junior, and a senior, and they bring a lot to the table. We've had a few meetings so far and they've got some great ideas and they certainly are looking forward to answering any questions you may have. So, I'll turn it over to my Student Advisory Council.
Well, I'm sure we'll have some questions. Is there something you want to tell us first? You want to make a report?
Do you want to ask questions first or do you talk first?
What would you like to do? You can be in the driver's seat.
Tell them what they have going on. Somebody has.
I think the biggest problem that we noticed this year is that we don't have late buses anymore. So, it's making it harder for students to stay after and for like to have more participation in clubs. I think we're looking for, to do two things like that includes like outdoors for the educational wise is like outdoor classrooms. So, in the spring, we'll have like benches and like tables and stuff to like, so we can go outside and like enjoy the weather while also being taught at the same time. And also, we're looking to do outdoors like lunches. So, like during lunch periods, like if we can find a space somewhere like behind the cafeteria where we can sit outside and eat lunch instead of sitting inside. That's it.
Lizzie, do you want to add to that?
She's everything, so.
Okay. Do we have questions here? Yeah, I do.
I guess I have two questions. The first one is for Jasmine, right?
Hmm.
We have, as you think about what you might want to do next year, okay, I'm asking you to think ahead. We have two great opportunities. One are some, a lot of excellent AP courses. We also have the IB courses. When you think about those two different opportunities, which, how do you feel about them as choices?
Well, actually, I'm already in IB English.
Ah.
So, I'm gonna look into doing two of those courses next year.
Two of the IB?
Yeah. So, I can get the diploma, hopefully.
So, you're planning to do the diploma, IB diploma course?
Yeah. I'm not sure. I'm thinking about AP, but I'm not sure yet. But we'll see how IB goes just for this one year because since it is a two-year course, I'll most likely stay with IB, but I'm not sure for AP yet.
And what is, that attracted you to the IB courses?
Last year, I had my English teacher with GV and she like really encouraged it a lot. And she like started with an IB prep class. And I like how it's more interactive than just your normal classes and like more presentations and like more group work.
And so far, so good?
Yes.
And not to be left out, when you think about your classmates, you have some outstanding achievers and you have some not-so outstanding achievers and obviously quite a few in the middle. Who do you think is the biggest difference between those that are able to achieve a lot in high school and those that are struggling in high school?
Probably motivation because I know that a lot of the kids that don't have the grades that they could, it's just they don't want to. They don't like, they're too lazy or they don't have the motivation to try. So, even though they're smart and they have the knowledge and the capability to have the As and get all the good grades and everything, they just, they don't have them because they don't want to do it. They don't want to do the work.
So, sociologists would, I guess, would talk about intrinsic versus extrinsic motivation, right? Do you think someone pushing them, which is, which would be extrinsic, would help? Since it sounds like they don't have any intrinsic or hinge on the motivation.
I mean, it depends on the person and I feel like it depends on their personality because I know for me, like when my mom nagging me to do homework, it makes me want to do it less.
Could you repeat that?
For the record. When my mom nagging me to do homework, it makes me want to do it less.
Got it.
But when I have like, it's more of like the motivation and like the encouragement from the teacher's perspective, it's more motivating for me as in if you don't do your work, you get a bad grade kind of thing, rather than my mom saying, "Go do your homework. Don't do that. Do your homework." It's just like, it's repetitive.
So, to broaden that, teachers actually have a larger impact, at least on you and perhaps your friends, than parents?
Yes.
Interesting. We'll see. Thank you both for your candidness.
Michelle, it's okay. It's our job as mothers.
I wanted to ask you about what have you gone about to get some outdoor furniture? And I know there, you probably have to follow some guidelines on what's acceptable and everything. But have you been speaking, do you have any idea what's acceptable, what type of furniture you would need to get? I mean, have you had that kind of conversation or are you just in the thinking, this is what we want?
So, as of right now, the class of 2017 donated their funds, their remaining funds, to the outdoor classroom. And so, right now, we're kind of discussing like what that's going to look like and not necessarily the furniture yet, more like how we're going to do it and like how the area will be and how we'll expand on it in order to make the classroom work. And as for doing like the lunch outdoors, we already have picnic, some picnic tables outside of the cafeteria. So, I think that we could probably just refurbish them and make that like probably put a new coat of paint on them rather than purchasing new furniture because I think it'll probably work the same way.
That's a good move. Well, that's great that you have that, you know, that money in order to plan. Very exciting. You have a vision now. So, we want to report back on how that's going later on.
Of course.
Would anyone else like to ask any questions?
I was just going to ask if the cafeteria is a more popular place to be now with all the new furniture in there.
Yeah, it is.
It makes a big difference.
The tall tables are like wanted. Like, I don't even know how to, like what word to say for it.
Going to make reservations?
But you want to get to the tall tables first. And there's only four seats. So, you kind of have to like pick between your friends of who you want to sit there. It's crazy. Yeah, high school's tall.
Okay. Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing from you again.
So, you can continue to manage?
Probably.
And now, we'll have the report. Oh, you have a report too? Oh, no, you're still there. No, you finished?
I'll move.
Okay. No, are you, are you up?
I'm not sure. We're going out of order, so.
Right. I know. I skipped a couple. But I can go right on to the Environmental Pilot Club because that, he can stay at the table.
And thank you for taking this out of order. As I mentioned, it's the end of the term and the students are eager to get back home and finish their studies as we wind up the end of the term on Friday. So, I'm going to ask Lilian Pierro, Alicia Papadakis to come up and talk about the plan that they sent to you. I will just preface and then I'll set us, I'll move aside. We had three clubs this year that unfortunately didn't run due to either lack of interest or lack of an advisor. So, this, if it's approved, would replace either the Yu-Gi-Oh! Club, the Faith Club, or the Code Club. All three clubs didn't run this past year and they were in place last year. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Papadakis.
And I'm Lillian Piero, and we're here today to get the approval of the Environmental Club to run at Wareham High School.
Okay. So if you walk through the halls of the Wareham High School and you look into any of the science classrooms such as AP Bio, or AP Environmental, or even Anatomy and Physiology, you'll see, you'll always see like a full classroom.
And so clearly, that shows that science is definitely something that kids are interested in the schools, and this interest doesn't only lie within the classrooms. When we were getting our petition signed, we got over 50 signatures.
Our goal for this club is to give students a chance to learn about the natural world in which we live.
In our everyday life, we are always surrounded by technology. Even right now at this meeting, technology is a big part of our lives. We just want to sort of get away from that and connect back with the outdoors, and we would participate in outdoor activities such as kayaking and nature walks.
We'll also be doing activities to benefit the community, like town cleanups, and we'll try to reduce our waste and try to recycle more, like within the community and our school and just the whole school system, the district. Yeah.
Any questions?
No, sounds good.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. It seems like every day, I'm exposed to some controversy about environment, nature. Literally, as I was driving over here, they were talking about wolves and the passion that some people have for wolves and others that want to kill them off because they're destroying livestock and things like that. How, is there controversy in Wareham High School's science about the, about the environment, about ecology, about the kind of thing that you would like to expose people to?
I mean, there's controversies about everything, and within my environmental class, actually, AP Environmental, we do talk about things such as, for instance, we just did a project on trees, and you know how across the Wareham Plaza, they cut down a bunch of trees and put solar panels? Is it more beneficial to have solar panels or to have trees? So it definitely is a controversy within the Environmental Club. We would definitely focus on arguments like that, and there really isn't a right answer. They're both very beneficial things, and that's, I think, the Environmental Club is important for showing everyone's point of view, so no one's wrong.
We'll have calm discussions about everything. So it will be talked about, but it won't be fought over, and that's not like the focal point. We're more interested in the nature aspect rather than the arguments.
You both gave great answers. Thank you.
I applaud the nature, the nature aspect, because we live in such a beautiful place. All these walking trails, the town forest, everything abounds, all the coastline. You can do all that kayaking, you can do all that walking, you can go co-hogging, and there's a, there's a lot to do here that you can take advantage of, and it doesn't cost anything. You can just go, you know, just go do it. And I hope you, when the sailboats, you know, when we, when we do onset, do all of that boathouse and have more sailing, that you'll be revealing yourself of the beauty that's there also. And it's a healthy lifestyle and just promotes a healthy lifestyle, so. I liked when you said, "Get unplugged from all the technology too." Absolutely. Don't take your iPhone out there in a waterproof bag. You go out and just be quiet when you go out.
I'd like to move approval of the Environmental Club.
Do I have a second?
Second. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Five, zero, zero. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
The Director of Student Services, Mrs. Fay, would you come down? We're trying to go back to the order.
Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I wanted to take an opportunity tonight to share with you a survey that we sent out to our parents, and we sent it out specifically to parents and guardians of students who have students in the district with individualized education plans, so we're focusing on the special education parents. So the purpose in general of an IEP is to give parents a voice in the process of special education. So in an effort for us as a district and as a department to improve our practice, we really wanted to focus on what the culture currently is in the district, what we are doing well, what we might not be doing as well as we could or should, and we wanted to survey all of the parents and guardians and grandparents of the students with disabilities in our district. So we sent three separate emails out over a period of about a month, giving people opportunity to be able to answer, and we've got back quite a few responses. And I do want to say, this was done by a third-party company, and it was done confidentially, so parents could choose to give their name and share what school their child attended, or they could choose to be completely anonymous, which I thought was a really great thing, and it, I think, encouraged more parents to participate. So some of the goals that we were looking at were really to get information on our current practices. We really wanted to know what the feel was of the way that we're doing things in our district as far as special education, not only services, but also evaluations, the processes that we use for meetings, how we're handling procedures. We wanted to gauge our current procedures, measure what the family climate and district climate was, and try to use the information that we received to plan our trainings, set our goals for the department, and kind of look at our strategic planning over a long period, longer period of time in the future. And we also want to increase our district compliance, which was something that we were cited on in our most recent Coordinated Program Review. So some of the things that we already kind of know going into the survey is that a lot of our parents and guardians have not always had the best experiences with our school district historically, when dealing with IEP processes, when dealing with evaluations for their children, and when dealing with some of our programming. So we wanted to try to tease out what specific areas were causing this feeling of not being satisfied or not having good experiences. There's also a very low parent and guardian participation, as we've, I've mentioned to you before on several occasions, in our Special Ed Parent Advisory Council. Our meetings have not historically been very well attended. We are starting to move, I think, in a better direction. We've got a new council in place, new bylaws in place, and we have enlisted the help of some agencies in the state that are offering free support to the president and the officers of the CPAC this year, and getting them kind of rejuvenated. And they have now launched their own website, which they're in the process of finalizing. As soon as that's finalized, we're going to get that link up for parents right on the Wareham Public School website, so they can just click right on a link from our website and be able to get right on the CPAC website, talk about membership, what their interests are, what their needs are from CPAC, and have all the contact information and meeting information in front of them. Also, clearly, our latest Coordinated Program Review indicates low compliance on timelines and several procedural issues that we're currently working in our mid-cycle review to address. Some of them have already been addressed, and we continue to work on improving those. So some of the things that we asked is, we wanted to know district compliance with IDEA and DESI. We wanted to look at parents' feelings and impressions at team meetings, and we wanted to look at the consistency between the district schools regarding team meetings. So I, my entire goal coming here is to make sure that as a parent, the experience you have with your child at DECA looks the same at mine, it looks the same at the middle school, looks the same at the high school, that we're following the same procedures, following the same team processes, and being able to have the same feel in our meetings throughout the process for that, so we have the continuity throughout the process for the parents. So some of the things that we learned from the survey, which were, again, I did not pinpoint it by building or by school, these are just the trends that we saw across all of the data that we collected from the surveys. Administrators showing up at meetings, although parents were not notified and they were not on the invitation or attendance sheet, so kind of a surprise person coming to the meeting. And why that's a problem, it might not seem like a problem, but it is a violation of IDEA for the parents not to know who is attending from the district ahead of time. So it kind of creates an uncomfortable, and somewhat sometimes the parents had put on the surveys that they felt it was adversarial to have administration there without them knowing ahead of time, so that that was important to know. Members of the team listed on the invitation and attendance sheet either did not show up to the meetings or left the meeting early. That clearly breaks the integrity of the team when team members are getting up, leaving in the middle of the meeting, when you're discussing your child and their needs. And then it also makes it not necessarily a team decision, because we're getting limited information or input from all members of the team that are interested and invested in this child. Summer services or extended school year was not properly discussed according to the survey data that we collected, and why that's a problem. Clearly, families, we want families to understand extended school year, understand the need for it, and this also helps prevent conflicts and enhances our summer planning as a district, keeps us from going over our budget for summer, and keeps us with all of the resources that we need going into summer to be able to service all the students that are participating in extended school year. Parents cited that they needed clearer discussions around placement team discussions. Why this is a problem, I think it's vital for parents to feel like they're part of the placement team, to be comfortable with decisions, and to be legally part of the decision on placement for your child. And placement can mean simply placement within the school as far as what type of programming from inclusion to a sub-separate, or it can mean placement in a different location. So some of the things that I learned from going through the data was that we are compliant and successful in multiple areas. Overall, parent impressions are typically a bit better than some of the other districts that were surveyed, and that was shared by the company that ran this survey for us. So our, most of our parent impressions were actually better than some of our surrounding districts in the state. It did identify areas where I can look at now and see where we need professional development and where our staff needs growth, so that we're able to improve these practices. And those are including, but not limited to, extended school year, placement discussions, and meeting notices, and I would also add to that the team process. And we will continue to encourage parent participation in this survey, as well as the addition of adding a component, hopefully by the first of the year, that will almost be like a customer service satisfaction survey that we will hand to parents at every IEP meeting to collect further data on how they felt the meeting went, asking a lot of similar questions so that we can collect data to kind of gauge if we're improving in these areas. So some action steps that we've already put in place or that we have in motion is focused training on team meetings and special education regulations and law, both state and federal. Efforts to recruit, advertise, and make accessible all CPAC meetings and informative seminars and trainings for parents surrounding special education. Utilization of parent and guardian and student input sheets to be filled out prior to meetings in an attempt to increase participation by all, and this is something that we've already started. We have age-specific or elementary, middle, high school-specific sheets that students will be given ahead of time where they can put information about their strengths and their needs that can be shared at the meeting to increase both student and parent participation, and the parent would be given a similar sheet. Also, as I mentioned, the post-meeting surveys to collect the additional data and gauge the success of our action steps. And I'll take any questions.
I've seen your action steps, but I looked at one problem that has to do with the teachers or, not saying it's about the team meetings, and I know it's often the case that there's no coverage. Is this what, do you find that this is what's going on for a lot, you know, for that?
And I think, again, it was a common trend throughout the district. It wasn't one specific building, but I do believe that coverage has a lot to do with it. You know, unfortunately, as we discussed at our last meeting, you know, substitutes are very difficult to find, and when we do have substitutes and we're running meetings, I'm just, I'm gonna pick on the middle school for a minute just because they have the most students and the most meetings out of every school in our district. So they have 200 students with IEPs running approximately 400 to 500 meetings per year. That's very difficult to fit into 180 school days when you, you know, have to have an hour and a half or two-hour meetings for eligibility, or original meetings, or even an annual review. So it is, scheduling is difficult. I think coverage is difficult. I think we do what we can with our resources to be able to have every teacher have a say. It does create a little bit of an issue for us because we have to have parents sign excusal forms for team members that aren't there, or that we have listed on the invitation because they're interested parties, but then they cannot be there. And sometimes it's, the teacher is ill, or there's a crisis in the building and the psychologist might not be able to attend. So in that case, it just means that we have to hold one extra meeting sometimes to bring those people back to the table at a more convenient time, and it just creates even more of a scheduling issue.
But I know that the coverage for everyone is a problem in any school. That seems to be the biggest, the biggest, the toughest problem. It's very hard to follow those regulations in that area.
Absolutely.
So I'm not faulting Wareham. I just wanted to find out if you saw that as maybe the main contributor to the difficulty of...
And it's, it's common in many districts that I've seen, that we have very difficult time covering to have the team there.
Just have one question about, about how many responses did you receive?
So we had 38 responses, and that's, probably have six, approximately 600 students in the district that are identified with a disability and have an IEP. So that was a very low percentage, and that was after sending it out three times. I was actually pleased because it was the first survey that I had sent out to get 38, so I'm hoping that the next time we try this in the spring, we'll get more, and we'll do a little bit more advertising on the website about the survey and hope, hopefully word of mouth through IEP meetings. And when the start of the, the post-meeting surveys, I think I'm hoping that people will be more willing to give feedback.
I definitely like the idea of the post-meeting survey or questionnaire. I think that will give you some good information there.
I agree. Thank you.
And I also like the idea of finding out from parents what they might want, what their concerns might be ahead of time before coming to the meeting so that you, they know they're heard and you can, you're ready to address the concerns if you know what the questions are ahead of time. And I had one more question. You mentioned, I know it's 38 respondents, so you might not have this answer, but you said you wanted to find out what we're doing well. I mean, you talked about areas to improve. Did, did we get credit for what we're doing well? That's what I wanted to know. Did you?
We did, and some of the trends really showed times, timeliness of receiving invitations, timeliness of receiving IEPs, you know, in a timely manner. If they're, you know, we typically, we have systems in place now where we hand the parent a very specific summary sheet that includes goal areas and grid services, so that gives us 14 days to get the IEP to them, so we're pretty good district-wide about doing that. And so people felt that they were getting what they needed in a timely fashion after the meeting, and that they were receiving notice ahead of time. There were a couple of people who felt that they had a difficult time scheduling a meeting, and that was at a couple different buildings, and I think that, you know, again, I think it comes down to coverage, availability, and number of meetings that we chair. That really probably is what causes that. We try our best, and I work with all of the clerks and all of the team chairs and all of the sped admin in every building to make sure that we offer parents every flexibility that we possibly can, but sometimes it's, it can be difficult.
I have no doubt that everyone's trying their hardest, and that's not the issue. I would not see that as an issue at all. I see the, the other part that we've discussed as being the issues, which are in many schools. That's the issue.
Yes, sir.
So unless I missed it, there were very few concerns about the quality of education that children were receiving. Is that a fair statement?
Well, this particular survey, I wasn't addressing programming. I was specifically addressing the IEP team process. So all of my questions were specifically around like the Coordinated Program Review sightings on our compliance, our team meetings. That's the pieces that I was looking at.
So they didn't give enough opportunity to say that, even if they wanted to say it, there wasn't really the format to do that?
There wasn't a format in this particular survey to talk about the satisfaction of the services. No.
And how were this survey sent out?
I sent them out electronically. I sent them out electronically.
Electronically?
Mm-hmm. Three times.
38 sounds low, but you know, I tend to think that if people were really upset, they would have responded. So you can almost assume that the people that didn't respond probably on average were happier than those that did. So I wouldn't be too upset with the 38. Responding to surveys is not exactly a public strength. Mine either. I mean, just by coincidence, I got a, there was a, at the Mass Mass Conference in Hyannis today, there was a presentation by Miriam Friedman, who wrote the book Special Education 2.0. It was a very provocative presentation. I won't try to summarize it obviously, but she seemed, and she's a former teacher, a sped attorney. Are you familiar with her work?
No.
Okay. Bottom line is she thinks that, that we're headed to a disaster because we've got a rising, and that's still, and that's certainly true here, a rising percentage of our students. And sped is an uncapped resource and general education is a capped resource. And she thinks we need to do something or else there's going to be a serious problem within the parent population as a result of that fact. Would you agree with that?
I would agree 100% with that. And I think, you know, a lot of it comes from, I just came from a DUCI meeting last week. So they've reinstated the state meetings where they meet Cape and Islands, Southeastern Mass. They, they used to, they stopped them 10 years ago and going this past time, I remember why. Because typically it's a bunch of angry special ed directors screaming at DUCI for the, you know, the, the new, you know, things that they put out, that they expect the school districts to follow and that they keep changing. And so it was a lot, I know, I remember now why they stopped them, but it was actually something that we spoke about is over identification, response to intervention, and what past practices were and how things keep changing. And it's always seems like a catch-up game for us to try to figure out what the proper thing is to do, what the legal thing is to do. So I think the answer is to stay on top of it. I think it's, you know, something that we're constantly following. We look at all the advisories there, shared with all of our team chairs, all of our special ed admin, so that we are hopefully on the cutting edge of every change that comes out and able to stay ahead of it and quickly train on it and get the information that we need to make sure that we're following. But it is a culture shift as well. To change from a sub separate population of students to an inclusive population of students is a tough change for everybody to accept. And I think it takes time and we're moving forward. We're making leaps and bounds. And I think the professional development that we've had this year alone and the consistent mentoring and that person coming out into our schools to work and model for our teachers has definitely been a success this year, but we have a ways to go. But I, I do believe we can get there.
Thank you for being here. I enjoy your commentary.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tough act to follow the art and the Abigail Adam scholars and the clubs and advisories. It's all very exciting. To address the special education concern, some of the work that we are doing at the Wareham Public Schools is targeted, although it's not intentionally targeted at that specific problem, but much of the work that we're doing now actually has the potential to help students ahead of time, being proactive rather than reactive. Part of the issue that, I know I was just presented at a Title I, the Massachusetts Title I Conference last week. And at that presentation, we discussed the different strategies that we've put into place. And one of the comments, one of the, my co-presenters made was that we have a system that waits for children to fail before we actually do anything about it. So RTI and special education are set up to see what's wrong and then run to figure out what is it that we're going to do to address those issues. We believe that, and the work at DECIS is showing at least now currently, that we've actually put practices in place when students are young and at Minnet as well and the pre-K that identify different areas of weakness or challenges that students have and put in practices prior to an identification of sorts that actually stimulate children so that they can adhere to the different skills that are, that they're being addressed, that are being addressed. One of the, one of the other co-presenters is a principal from Maine and she actually, they had a chart that indicated the number of special education referrals in her school of 600 students that she started with. And three years later, that number went from 38 to 1. So because they started with such, at such a young age with these strategies, we feel that we've addressed some of the things that have challenged many districts for a very long time. So stay tuned on that. I provided copies of the report, but basically what I'd first like to start with is DECIS has completed the first boost pilot for kindergarten. The data for that program, they, is untimed phonics assessments. It's the last page of the report that I gave to you, but I'd like to, and we have three more K teachers signed up for the next round. Bethany Chandler, Sarah Russo and Joanne Gibbs have been helpful in this process. And Carrie Thurston from CSS Consulting, who is here through Title I, has met with DECIS teachers to set up the schedule for flexible grouping. Minnet has also begun the work, flexibly grouping students in similar circumstances with one teacher and support depending on the need. The process was challenging. Scheduling is tough. And I want to thank Robyn Murphy, Tracy Cote and Joan Siemens and the teachers' willingness to, they've been fantastic, actively participating in this to achieve results and they're off and running. All of our schools are actively engaged in working with curriculum, as you can see from the professional development list that I provided for you on all of the activities that are happening. We meet with the inductees. Maureen Manning has plans and schedules for our new staff to meet. And basically she has two, two strands. The interesting part of that job is that there are all different kinds of new staff in those meetings. So it's not just teachers, but it's also support staff. So we have to do our best to accommodate them. I think it's, it's natural for me, and I think for many of us, to focus on teachers all of the time. So it's, sometimes it's a little bit of a struggle, but, and they're our largest population of people, but we have new psychologists, sometimes new nurses, OT, PT, all different kinds of services that new people come into our district. So we're really trying to be cognizant of that as we plan meetings for them. Basically, her strategy is twofold. One is to familiarize them with the programs in the district, which, which we assume, we all know them because we've been here a bit, but we're brand new. You don't know about beyond school time. You don't know about global ed. You don't know about all of the other things that happen here that are so rich and full. And so she likes to have a presentation by someone in the district who willingly comes and does the presentation. And then second to that, she'll have an activity and homework for them to do that hopefully improves practice, which has been so far pretty successful. We have a large group this year. The text that's used is the first year's matter, Becoming an Effective Teacher. Of course, it's Becoming an Effective Teacher, but the author of that is Carol Pelletier Bradford. As you can see, the professional development schedule is from the last reported when I was here last. This is what's been going on since. We had a half day yesterday. It was school-based and people were very busy. We've had 589 walkthroughs, evaluations. We're also providing lists for principals every month, indicating more specifically and more personally where those evaluations are occurring, the amount of those evaluations and so forth. And those are conversations that Dr. Shaverhood has with principals and also sends out that data to them. We've created an IB postcard to send out to surrounding towns, inviting students to come and shadow current Wareham students in the IB program. That postcard is being created, I mean, it's been created, but it's being processed now. And we should have them this week, beginning of November, to send them out. In math, we've been hooked into Pearson Realize, which is through InVision, and that actually gives us a lot of information, a lot of data involved in that, but it helps us to see the amount of time that students are working on different elements of that program, activities, assessments, where they measure to the standard and so forth. So that's been fantastic. The standardized testing schedule for the year has been posted and it's online. MCAS, SATs, there's a ton, there are a lot, there's a lot going on. So the schedule is done and posted. And the last page is the information from our boost pilot program that ran from September 19th through October 27th. Four teachers were involved. These are, there are about 84 students included in the data here. And this data is from what teachers often use. It's different, it's different than FAST because FAST is timed, so that's a different measure. But these measures were used in the interim to see the progress from when they started and where they are now. Any questions?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the data and I don't know what the colors.
Oh, the colors, I assume, yeah, we use these colors all the time. So red is whoa, stop, oh no. Orange is a little bit better than red, but still worthy of note. Yellow is getting there and green is you're good to go.
Ah, I get it.
So it's similar to traffic.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now it makes sense. And I have a question about when you spoke of the, the Pearson Realize. Indicating how students are doing on the scores, et cetera, et cetera. Does this inform personalized learning for that student? Is that what it's doing?
Precisely. So basically by standard, it indicates where students are day to day so that teachers can plan effectively.
In real time.
Correct.
Which is what we're trying to do. I can't help but when, when Mrs. Fay was talking about the number of meetings and the number of identified students we had, I know I, we, we spoke about what you started talking about the beginning about what we put in place now is good for all students and we should have less special education students and more students succeeding right from the beginning and not falling behind. Because it might not be special needs if they had the right education that they needed to begin. So very important that we...
I think, I think it's important to note that the, a lot of times, I think in education for a number of reasons, you know, we focus on one particular strategy or another. And it's, it's very tough, as you know, as a former teacher, right? There are so many different strategies and so many different things that we could do. I think we've come up with a nice myriad of strategies that address a lot of the different components that our kids are faced with internally when they walk through the door. Exposure to books, for example, concept of print, concepts of print. You know, you can't imagine how many kindergartners don't know about books, right? And so it starts there and we begin to see, but that, but that not being exposed creates other areas of need. You know, strengthening the physical being of the core, your brain and how that's all connected. So all of these strategies are embedded. And the, the boost program is really rigorous, extremely rigorous, but it's fun. So kids enjoy it and it also produces results. So we were speaking maybe of doing something next meeting to show a lot, the little clips or what, what the program actually looks like in action. So we'll talk further about that for next time so you can see it.
I look forward to that. Any questions?
I'm just curious as to what the assessment was that was used. Was it teacher-made or?
It's teacher-generated.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jeff?
The last page, the color, Brad. Are these heterogeneous students? There could be some sped students in here.
They are.
Okay. I take it, and I'm not trying to pour words into your mouth, not that you would ever let me hear that.
Never.
I take it this, you also, and I, I think Mrs. Fay, if she was here, would agree with this, you're also a strong believer in the, in the Finnish model, which is to say, if you get it early enough, kids that may be sped students in kindergarten, first grade, may very well not be sped students by the time they get to fourth, fifth grade or sixth grade. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I would say that if we could provide the necessary supports so that we can accurately, with all of our data and knowledge, assess accurately, that's all, that, that's what I wish. I think a lot of times we don't know. We know something might not be right. We know that there's something wrong. We're just not sure, you know, we're just not necessarily sure of what that is. And we put them through a special education process of testing and so forth to find out. What, what we'd like to do is have, have our, have teachers feel validated in their knowing and then provide them strategies so that we can see, well, if there's a processing issue, try this strategy. Well, if that strategy works, that, that negates the processing issue, then we've fixed the problem, right? But it has to be the right strategy and that's key.
But I thought that's precisely what CSS Consulting was helping you do.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, so...
But I'm not saying that there'll still be students that clearly need help further than that. And I, I don't, I wouldn't be, you know, it's, it's, I don't, I believe that with a lot of kids, we can help, but I also believe that there are kids that need special education services.
Of course, but when you talk about the mild moderate group, if that's the correct terminology, some of those will literally drop out. Is that a fair statement?
We hope, yes.
Do you feel, I mean, you do a tremendous amount of formative, formative assessments today, yes?
Yes.
And they're being used to do precisely what you're describing?
Correct.
So are you saying you are doing right now what you want to do or you're still not able to do it for whatever reason up to the, to the level that you would like?
We're doing what we would like to do.
Okay. Okay, so the 27%.
25.5, but yes.
I could swear someone said 27 a few weeks ago, but whatever it is, you expect over time, as a result of what you're doing, especially in DECIS, to actually potentially fall?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
When you mentioned kindergartners coming and not seeing a printed book, it reminds me about how I firmly believe that a lot of students do not get the, obviously do not get the same preschool exposure and they come in behind the eight ball then. And I love to see universal pre-K.
I'm all for it.
Come this way and I know what the work we've been doing with the area preschools too, to try to level the playing field for these students. It's really important. We don't want, we don't want the kids to come in behind.
No, we've invited the area preschools to, to see our work and happy to have them. So as much as we can help kids, and we're on a mission.
And share curriculum. I know a lot's been done.
Yeah, we'll share whatever we have. So we are definitely on a mission. We want to change kids' lives and really give them every opportunity that they deserve. It doesn't matter where they live.
That's right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's hear about the trip.
I'm here for moral support.
I'm here for moral support.
Because you're part of it.
Does that make you a general?
Hardly.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very excited to be sitting here before you this evening to talk about our next global education opportunity. It's for February of 2019. The best of Brazil. We're expanding our global education to the next continent, and that will be South America. Dr. Stedman was kind enough to join me this evening, obviously because of his vast experience in this region, and as the former upper principal for the American School of the Campinas. If, you should all have the itinerary in your packet, and on page three, it outlines the nine-day itinerary. After departing from Boston straight into Rio de Janeiro, we will stay there for three days and enjoy the remarkable international landmarks of this region. Following that, we'll spend two days in Agu, Agu, I'm sorry, Aguaçu Falls, both on the Brazilian side and the Argentinian side. And then on day eight, we'll do an exchange with the American School of the Campinas. Prior to this trip, that's why we're going before you, so far in advance, is we're gonna establish pen pals with the students over in Brazil, and establish FaceTime connections. So really, expand on the knowledge of this region between our students here in Wareham and the students in Brazil. It's really a fantastic opportunity for these students. The global education program is quite vibrant in this school district, and we wish to expand upon that. Just seeing the light in the students' eyes in the high school, as the global education advisor at the high school, it, it really makes me think so positively about our future and how they're looking, and being so proactive in expanding their horizons in this global market. And then on this final day, we go to San Paulo, we, we'll tour the area, and then depart from there back to Boston. Dr. Stedman, do you have anything to add of the region?
No, there, there's so much to see in Brazil, as you know. I think the itinerary is fantastic in terms of going to Rio and experiencing that aspect of Brazil, but then also going to Foz Iguaçu, and then having, I think it's, it's extremely well-planned that you're gonna take advantage of both the Brazilian side and the Argentinian side. You can imagine that rivalry doesn't just exist in soccer, it exists over who has the better side of the falls. So, and I know that the students at the American School of Campinas, also an IB school, are looking forward to connect with our students. I mean, there's so many things that could happen in terms of even planning a potential CAS opportunity where there's, they're combining resources and experiences to sort of fulfill the obligations of the IB program, both in Campinas and in here at Wareham, so.
At this time, I'm subject to your questions.
I think it's important to note that students, once they pay their registration fee, can work for the next couple of years to make the money to go, so it's not restricted to, money should not restrict a student from going on a trip.
Yeah, that's a great point, ma'am. We, I'd just like to give you an example. I have a student that's going to Greece and Italy. She's actually the president of the key club at the high school, and she has very limited means, but she worked throughout the summer because this, going to Greece and Italy was really a very firm goal of hers. And she worked in the work-study program through the summer, and she did so well with them that she continues to work for them through the school year. And she's, you know, she's, so far, she's on track to raise the money and to go on that trip solely due to her efforts. There are also four scholarships this year for the Greece-Italy trip available to students, and we hope to make a similar program available to students that go to Brazil.
Also gives them an opportunity to work on their Portuguese for two years before they go.
Yes.
What grades are available to go?
So it's open to all grades, obviously. If it's a younger student, then we would like a parent or guardian to attend with them. Right now, for the Greece-Italy trip, we have nine high school students going, and I believe three or four middle school students going. So that's generally the composition that we're looking for in terms of the student population.
Yeah?
How are the scholarships funded?
That's a great question. I believe Ms. Manning has, through the various fundraisers for the global, the Global Education Department, has raised funds. They've sold, you know, little trinkets like the sun catchers that they've sold through Global Aid. I'll have to get back to you on that, Mrs. Sweat, I'm not positive.
But it's locally generated dollars.
Yes, it is.
That many people are involved in generating, but then get given to those who need.
Absolutely.
That's the basic idea.
Absolutely.
But this is almost a $4,000 shift.
Yes, the exact price for a student is-
Yeah, that's all right.
Thirty-six hundred. But then, if they sign up in advance, they get a discount. And then again, we have the work-study programs available and some scholarship money to-
But at a certain point, there's no refund, correct? I mean, there's a, there's a-
It's a graduated scale, yes, so.
Dr. Stedman, Brazil.
Yes.
Talk about a government in turmoil. When you were down there, did you ever feel unsafe?
I didn't. I, the reports were that we would feel unsafe, there's a lot of things out there. I took my three daughters to every single one of these sites. We openly walked the streets of Rio de Janeiro, had a wonderful time, spent many times eating amazing sandwiches on the beaches, right in Ipanema where this picture is taken. I was never harassed or bothered in any way, shape, or form, and I felt very confident having my daughters walk with me down the streets of Brazil. It was, if anything, we were really blessed with open arms and delightful people, amazing food. The sights really are phenomenal. The falls, nothing against our own Niagara Falls, they're wonderful, but these falls are truly remarkable. And that that's great, they're going down to the Devil's Throat aspect of the Foz Iguaçu, the nature that they'll see. I, I think, like any major trip, whether you're going to Italy, or Greece, or New York City, if, if you prepare well, and the students are street smart, and you learn some of those techniques not to stand out in a crowd, and, but that's true with international travel, you'll be fine, and you'll have an amazing experience. If you go out of your way to use the old term, be the ugly American, so to speak, you'll attract attention, attention that you don't want. But I'm fully confident that Mr. Stanton, the other people running this organization, are gonna prep our kids to make sure that they are fully prepared and have an amazing time.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
When you say work-study, what are those, what are those opportunities?
So it's with the Beyond School Time Department, and they've been working, they work with the kids over the summertime and now after school.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Have a great time.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next vote on the memorandum of agreement, bus drivers.
Thank you. This is the second year of a three-year contract. As we settled the contract with the bus drivers last year, it was agreed to open for negotiation of salary only, the contract. We started negotiations during the summer and continued into this year. I bring to you the memorandum of agreement for your approval. The salary for our bus drivers effective August 1st, 2017 would be a zero percent increase, effective August 1st, 2018 would be a point five percent increase. Article five holidays, we would add one holiday, would be the day after Thanksgiving. This would take place during this year. And finally, driving instructors effective August 1st, 2017, the hourly rate would be $25 per hour, effective August 1st, 2018, the rate would be $25.13. I would ask for the committee to move approval and ratify the contract.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Keep going with your agenda.
Thank you very much. I would ask for approval to accept two boxes of food to the Stage Backpack Program from Mr. Jeff Weller of Wareham. Thank you very much, and I would ask the committee to please accept this.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you. Under my report, I have approval of bills and payroll warrants. So for the payroll, ending October 28th, 2017, in the amount of $855,489.11, I would ask approval.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All, all those in favor? Aye. Five, zero, zero.
And then the bill warrant, November 9th, 2017, in the amount of $116,781.79, I would ask for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you very much. That completes my report.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's evaluation, and I'd like to say this is the third year that I'm participating in evaluating the superintendent. It's my first time as chair to compile a summary, and I would like to note that at the last two evaluations, it was noted that the superintendent is the only employee of the town who has public evaluation, and so it's something we have to do. And what I've done for the summary, because I wanted to be objective and not subjective, I used the numbers. I didn't use, summarize people's narratives because I felt, when I saw my narrative at one point summarized in the summary and read at a school committee meeting, that it, that it really didn't tell what I meant. So, in order to, and also, all the evaluations are public documents and can be read by anyone, so they are available. Therefore, I'd like to summarize what I've done here. There were a hundred points that we have to come, looking at the goals and objectives and the general responsibilities. So the rating that each individual gave, I noted, and they, I had a rating of eighty-nine point sixty-five out of the hundred. Jeff Sweat, eighty point one. Joyce Bakayoki, eighty-four point four. Mary Morgan, seventy-four point six. Lori Spear, eighty-six point four. The total of those divided by five gave an average of eighty-three, zero, three, and that is a rating scale that falls into the proficient. Four of the, as you can see by the scores, four of the scores rated the superintendent proficient, and one was needs improvement, but overall, it's a rating of proficient. If you look at the, if you look at how it's broken down, the goals and objectives, we weighted at forty points, and the average of the scores for those forty points of the five was thirty-two point seventy-two points. And the general responsibilities were rated sixty points, and that had an average rating of fifty point thirty-one out of the sixty. Again, the total is the same total, eighty-three point three. And before we move on, I'd like to know now if anyone would like to comment on their evaluations. Do they have comments?
You can start.
Okay.
You can, no, you can start. You want to start, do you have any comments?
I'm just gonna go last.
Okay.
Because I had a note somewhere, I'll find it. But I'll-
No, are you gonna comment?
I might, I have a short comment. I would just say that, overall, I would say that the district is moving in a positive direction under Dr. Neighborhood's leadership, that, you know, everyone is working together to make improvements to student achievement, and that there are many initiatives, a couple of them that we heard about tonight, including the Boost program and IB, among many others. And I just look forward to, to seeing where we go with those in, in the future.
Would you like to speak?
Yes. I'm gonna look directly at my paper, so I don't have to look at anyone else.
That's fine.
So, so a lot of my observations were formed not only as a school committee member, but as a parent of two middle school students. The commitment to high standards by our educators definitely were seen in the wonderful presentations brought to us at the school committee meetings, but also in my day-to-day observations as a parent, probably trying to be too actively involved in my pre-teens' lives. And I definitely was one of the thirty-eight parents who responded to Mrs. Fay's survey. I'm definitely lucky to have firsthand knowledge of both the day-to-day successes and challenges our students and faculty face. I've seen firsthand how the successes are celebrated and the challenges are handled. If I could be my own writing. I've seen a hands-on approach to tackling some of the problems we face and thorough action plans to back them up. I've shown, I've been shown evidence of how these plans were followed during these meetings. In addition, I've also been part of a subcommittee with Joyce by the superintendent this year to better understand how we can reach all the demographics of the Wareham parents. That was great. And then, in my actual evaluation, I had a lot of support of my rating of proficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just tell you, I gather data all year long, and at the school committee meetings, but, you know, that's not the only place where you learn what's going on. We were, we were presented by the superintendent with four binders of data that showed progress, showed where the problem areas were, and showed all the meetings that went into making the school, you know, making the school run, how we addressed our problems, and how we celebrated again, what, what accomplishments we've made, which I've noted, all the accomplishments, because we'd all keep saying the same accomplishments over and over, and they've been noted. But I've also observed the superintendent in so many settings throughout, throughout the year. I mean, I'm in contract negotiations with her for a number of different, different negotiations. I've been with her, working on grievance procedures, all the policy review meetings. I've seen her present and heard her presentations from conferences. I see her around town. She, she's, she's always around town, working for the Boys and Girls Club, working for the YMCA, and I bump into her where she's volunteering at community events, like, like when the Moving Wall came to town. I believe that, that she is tireless, I believe she's a well-rounded, well-rounded superintendent. There used to be the day when a superintendent was a specialist in one area alone. I feel our superintendent is someone who knows curriculum, who knows finance, who has a grasp of all the legalities, who understands that she has to work with the community. I just see, that isn't common. Every superintendent doesn't have those abilities, and that's what you look for, and that's what we have here. So I, that's why I rated the superintendent the way I did in my evaluation, has all the data in there spelled out for the grades that I gave.
Let me say, excuse me, let me say from the outset that I think it's, in many ways, thankless job, the superintendent of school. You don't get the re- You don't get the resources you need, you're now competing for students with one hand tied behind your back, and of course, you have this wonderful process of a public evaluation. So, I need to say that upfront, it's extremely difficult. Let me also say that I looked at the first three years of Dr. Shabrohood's time here as a period of getting to know the district, the strengths, weaknesses, threats, opportunities, all those things that you have to do. I also saw it as a period of planning, and trying to decide how to accomplish a vision. And then I saw it as a process of trying to get as many people as possible behind that vision through the strategic planning process, which was a public process, but also through many other informal interactions with the public, staff, the school committee, et cetera. But at a certain point, after all the documents are written, after all the meetings take place, after all the things that adults do in order to make things happen, you have to execute that vision. And I believe that is by far the most difficult part of the process. And the reason, unfortunately, is because a certain percentage of the people who are necessary to execute that vision don't get behind them. In fact, they consciously, even though they may never say it, are trying to prevent that vision from taking place. That is inevitable, because you're talking about change. And a lot of people don't respond well to change. So from the perspective of the fourth year, I saw it as a critical period of execution. And here's my problem as a school committee member. I know the exciting things that are taking place. Every school committee meeting, to me, is far more interesting than they have been before Dr. Shabrohood came here. Far more student involvement, far more staff involvement, far more exciting things like the boost program, far more use of data, formative assessment. So everything that I see adults are doing excites me. I could keep listing them, IB, academies, et cetera, et cetera. But in the end, I am forced to look at data that says, despite all these exciting things, something isn't working. So the question I ask myself, and I've been asking myself that for a long time, meaning as I was doing this, going through this evaluation process and actually writing it, the question I asked myself is, just how patient should I be? Meaning, I know I have to be somewhat patient, but there is a point at which I have to expect some level of performance, some accountability, some execution of this vision that I share completely with the superintendent. So, I ask myself, can I ignore the fact that, despite the fact that everybody knows the tests were different, Wareham, from 2013 to 2017, the numbers for the proficient or better dropped 20 points? Well, they're different tests, so I can't look at that 20 points as meaning, as being particularly meaningful. But the state average dropped less than 10. So why is it that, in those four years, we were, we dropped more than twice as much as the state average? That's troubling. But I still probably could ignore that. Need to say something? Oh, sorry.
She's coughing.
I also looked at graduation rates. Graduation rates have dropped. I also looked at dropout rates. Dropout rates have dramatically increased. Now, don't get me wrong, I understand completely that things that contribute to things like graduation rates and dropout rates, many of which, many of those variables are well beyond the control of the superintendent, and yet they are an indication of something. Should I ignore those data? Part of me says I should. There's another part of me that says, you have a fiduciary responsibility to every parent, and certainly every student, not to ignore things that clearly say something about the district. And then I looked at SGP's, Student Growth Percentiles. The eighth grade and below have not done well during this four-year period. The high school, if we look at it overall, brings the numbers up, but 3 through 8 have not done well during these four years. I'm less comfortable ignoring that data, because those data basically ignore proficiency and say, just how well are our students compared to other students who are at the same level? It's intended to allow a school committee member to have a sense of what's going on. But in the end, the thing that troubles me the most is the fact that I don't see a culture of accountability, even in year four. 96% of our educators are rated proficient or better. A typical bell curve would be about 70% proficient, about 15% exemplary, and another 15% needing improvement. That is, in brief, what a bell curve would normally show. Ours is 70-plus percent proficient, another 20-plus percent exemplary. It is very hard for this school committee member to reconcile the numbers that say our students are not doing all that well, although, a digression, it sounds like the DICA students are, and the kindergartners are doing really well, and unfortunately, we don't have those data yet. But it's very hard to reconcile the fact that we've got 96% of our teachers proficient or better, and the number of exemplary teachers twice the state average, and yet we've got student performance that isn't even close to the state average for grades 3 through 8. I keep differentiating. I think the high school has brought up the whole district in many respects. So, bottom line is, I struggled with this evaluation. There was almost a cognitive dissonance, in the sense that I see and I hear some very exciting things going on, and yet I don't have the student performance evidence to say that those exciting things are having the kind of impact that I think needs to happen. I've said enough? Thank you.
So first of all, I do want to recognize, like everyone else has, that there have been many initiatives that have been going on that are good initiatives, such as the IB program, dual enrollments, the STEAM Academy. And most recently, the one that I personally would have put first, and right away, when I, I would never want to be superintendent, but if I had become superintendent, that would have been my first, because I'm an early childhood person, to look at the early childhood years and making sure that they are given the literacy initiative that's happening now. My only concern with it, and I don't have proof of it, but I'm fairly certain there isn't enough support staff to actually have it implemented well. I know that paraprofessionals have been pulled from the classrooms in kindergarten, which makes it even tougher to do the groups and the centers. The size of the classroom, even though it's hardly like Fall River, where I am now, which is at 27 students in kindergarten, which is outrageous. But still, we need to keep it as, the class size as small as possible, especially in the early years, when we have children that are so, coming in so far behind, because they need as much individualized instruction as they can get. So I think that, looking back, you know, in the years, that instead of the other initiatives I would have gone for, I would have suggested going for the early years first, and making sure that that was in place, setting that foundation, and then moving on from there. As well as the social-emotional learning, being so important, because looking through the surveys, you see that there is huge concern about disruptive behavior within the school system. And I think that, personally think that's why many parents are pulling their children from the system. I know that there are supports that are now being put in place, such as the PBIS program, some other social-emotional programs, such as responsive classroom. However, again, these really should have been put in place before. The other concern that I had was that I wasn't seeing, or we weren't seeing all the data. I don't understand why we didn't see more of the FAST data to show us that these reading programs, new reading programs and math programs were impacting positively on the student learning. Again, I'm gonna end with that, I do see the superintendent putting in effort, definitely trying to improve the quality of our school system. However, I really think that it was kind of done in a backwards manner. I would have started, again, with the early childhood and making sure that that foundation was there, in order to be able to be successful with the demands in the future of their academics. And that's my brief summary.
Thank you. Next, if we look at the rating scale with the score, again, I said 83.03%, it is in the proficient range. And we look at the salary increase scale, and I'd like to also note, this is the third time that I participated in the evaluation. And at the last two meetings, the last two evaluations from the previous years, when it came time to increase the superintendent's salary, based on, again, a proficient evaluation, that you can receive an increase of 1 to 3%. The rationale for the lower rate was that the educators, it was based on the type of increase the educators were receiving, instead of on the superintendent's performance. Therefore, that's no longer a, the case, and I personally would be recommending a 3% increase. And this is the time when people can make motions for the increase or talk, but that's the point that we're at, and I wanted to tell you my rationale and where I was at. So, would anyone like to speak, make motions? Would anyone make a motion for an increase? I'm the chair, and I can't make the motion unless I step down. Or make any kind of motion? Yes?
Just a point of information. I agree with you that there was, there was one school committee member who felt strongly that we should tie the superintendent's increase to the educators. I also recall being one who thought that was inappropriate for a variety of reasons. So, I don't think they were actually tied to the educators' increase, but I agree, it came up in the discussion.
I saw it another way, because I saw it go down, down, down. So we're at the point where, this is where the discussion is. So I need a motion for some kind of, to talk about salary.
So moved. To talk about salary.
Sure. But I meant a number, a number.
What was it? Oh, okay, sorry.
And someone can have a different number. I'm looking for a number for a point of reference to start. Yes?
Despite my concerns about accountability and execution, I think the superintendent has done many things that hopefully, at some point in the future, will pay off handsomely for our students. I know she has also worked extremely hard on behalf of our students. I think the topic of proficient range increase, the 3%, I don't think is warranted, but I'm more than happy to make a motion for 1 and 1/2.
In order to vote, or to come with a counter-motion, I guess I'd ask if there is a second, or for discussion? Does anyone want to second that? Okay.
If there's no second, it's irrelevant. My motion is irrelevant.
Okay. Well, at this time, I'm stepping down as chair. I'd like the vice chair to take over.
Thank you. Does anybody have a motion? Since there was no second, for 1 and 1/2, does anybody else have another motion?
I am making a motion for 2%. Do I have a second for 2%? Or, excuse me. I'm so used to doing that now.
Are you making a motion for 2%?
I am making a motion for 2%.
I have a motion for 2%.
Does anybody have a second for that motion?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three. And, any opposed?
Opposed.
And yours truly has not voted yet. I didn't get a second for 1 and 1/2, so I will vote for 2. 4, 1, 0. I'll cede the chair back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any school committee reports? Okay, at this time, I would also like to say that this is the second year of the superintendent's current contract. She's received a rating of proficient for both years of the current contract, and this is directly from her contract language. Therefore, negotiations for a new or extended contract will automatically commence. As historically been the case, as the chair of the committee, I will be entering into negotiations with the superintendent and come back to the school committee for a vote. The contract vote will be an agenda item for the next school committee meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I may be miscounting, but last year was the first year, correct? Of her renewal?
And the first, the first evaluation.
There was one three-year contract, and then there was a second three-year contract. Is that correct?
Right.
A renewal? Okay. I think last year was the first year of her second contract. Is this, do you disagree with that?
But it's two years resulting in a rating of proficient or higher. We have had those two.
Right, but this, but it's two years as part of the second contract. Okay, this is only one year in the second contract. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way I...
This, this language that says, prior to August of 18, prior to August of 18, it didn't say, and after the second, that we can extend the contract, and the superintendent shall notify the committee... And the superintendent shall notify the committee that her desire to enter into negotiations, I've been notified too. And we're supposed to do this prior to August eighteen. Didn't say you had to wait till then, or, didn't say you had to wait.
I, excuse me, I believe this is my fifth year.
You're in your fifth year.
I'm in my fifth.
I agree with that.
And, and the addendum says that we signed would be, when I'm in my, at the end of a two-year proficient in a contract, we can start, we can go into negotiations to extend.
By the way, I'm not suggesting we can't do it. I'm just, I'm just questioning whether the, that particular part of the language essentially forces us to do it.
It doesn't force you.
It doesn't force.
But I have requested to go into negotiations.
And historically has been, has been the case, the chair enters into negotiations with the superintendent, and it comes to the school committee for a vote. I'm following all the precedents that have been set legally.
It's probably academic, but I'm just saying the, the last sentence, I don't think is applicable, but you're welcome to begin the process. There's nothing precluding you from entering the process.
And I can check with our attorney too. But I'm sure I'm right. But I'll do it. Okay? So, everybody understands?
Yeah.
I'll be entering into negotiations, and we will be voting at the next, at the next school committee meeting. Okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good couple.